Call Mr. Price, give Mr. Price a big hand. Give him a big hand, Councilman Price, please. Especially Lola, learning center. We have 11 members, so I think it's open up. All the speedy to order.
Blumenthal, Buscaino, Sadio, La Fuente, Suezar, Corretz, Martino, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Very good, next order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Let's have Mr. Fuentes approve, Mr. Buscaino seconds.
Mr. President, that brings us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Let's have Mr. Corretz approve, Mr. Ofero seconds.
And, Mr. President, before getting into today's agenda, there is a request to refer item number three back to the Rules and Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
Item number three ruled back to, without objection.
Very good, sir. For item number one, it's an item notice for public hearing, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that council receive and file 1F in as much as the lien has been paid in full, and the department further recommends that items 1A and 1H be continued to August 29.
Without objection, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. We do have a card in on the remainders for item number one.
Very well.
That brings us to items 2 through 17, they're items for which public hearings have been held. Items 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 16 should be held on the desk until such time as the committee reports have been circulated.
Let's hold them on the desk as you so suggest, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir.
Members, any specials on those? No specials on those, very good. Oh, Mr. Wezar, please.
Number 2, please.
Number 2 special, any other specials, members? 2 special for Mr. Wezar. Very good, Mr. Clerk, next order.
Mr. President, would you like to vote on the remaining items?
Why not? You suggested, I go with your suggestion, Mr. Clerk. Let's open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes, very good.
Mr. President.
17 forthwith, Mr. Ofero. Ms. Martinez, thank you very much for all you do, thank you, Ms. Martinez.
And, Mr. President, items 18 through 23, are items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, for consideration, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes, okay, for consideration.
And for those items, sir, items 18, 19, 20, 21, and 23 have cards, that leaves item 22 for council to consider.
All right, so item 22, let's open the roll on 22, unless there's no specials for the members, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes, next item.
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item 24 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Open the roll for consideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes.
And we have cards on item 24, sir.
Item 24, good. Mr. Bonner, thank you very much, good to see you. Okay, next item.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentation or items called special.
Well, let's see, Mr. Fuentes, are you ready, Mr. Fuentes? Mr. Fuentes is ready? So we'll have Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Sadio, good to see you, how are you, sir? Please welcome the Councilman of the 7th District, Mr. Felipe Fuentes, thank you so much.
Good morning, colleagues.
Mr. Fuentes, I'm gonna give you one minute, real quick here. I know, I'm gonna give you one minute to relax. All right, you go right ahead, hit it right now.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Labonge, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we're here to congratulate and recognize the Hanson Dam Triathlon Committee. This committee, this triathlon will be celebrating its 10th anniversary this Sunday at Hanson Dam. The Hanson Dam Triathlon is one of the fastest-growing and most exciting events in the city of Los Angeles. This will be the first year that the Hanson Dam Triathlon will be a USA triathlon, a USAT-sanctioned event. Meaning that athletes who are competing to make the USA Olympic triathlon team can and will generate points by participating in this event Sunday. This is the only triathlon in the city of Los Angeles, and it's in the 7th Council District at one of our regional assets, one of our regional parks, Hanson Dam. From the beginning, this triathlon has been a collaboration of public and private agencies, especially with tremendous support with Kaiser Permanente leading the way. I'm grateful for the work that this committee has done for drawing so many visitors, not just to the northeast San Fernando Valley, but to the attention of what it is to be healthy and to celebrate fitness. I'm very grateful to this committee and would like to encourage all of my colleagues, the Los Angeles family at large, to come out and support the athletes on Sunday, including myself and my CD7 team. I will be doing the sprint, Mr. Labonge, I will not be doing the full triathlon, I'm the last leg, I'm running this year, not biking like last year. Please come out and support the athletes on Sunday, and I'd like to have Fred Flores say a few words, he is the chairman of this triathlon committee, has been for many years, has been a tremendous steward to the northeast San Fernando Valley, most recently serving our previous Congress member, Howard Berman. Fred Flores, give him a big round of applause.
Thank you, thank you, my friends, council members, Mr. President, it's an honor to be here with council members that I've recognized. This has been a great task and a love of pleasure for me to continue chairing this event. We look forward to the Team Fuentes being out there. We have his shirts for the council member, here it is. I mean, this is not the right size.
A little small.
A little small for him.
Now that, he likes those small shirts, because then it shows his little muscles, his little muscles.
Here's his correct size, right here, there you go. But it's an honor to be here in front of the council chambers today, and I want to ask my race director to say a few words, but it's been a tremendous partnership with Kaiser Permanente out there, our volunteer corps, and all the people that come out to cheer out our racers, so I invite you to come out and participate and join us on Sunday, thank you.
Thank you once again for having us, it's been 10 years, it's been exciting. We started with 73 people in the very first one, now we're one of the largest triathlons in the city of Los Angeles, and actually technically the only one held within the city of Los Angeles, so we're very proud of that. It was started by the lifeguards as an event for the local community, really trying to bring the local community together, health and wellness, that's really what we were looking for and what we were growing, but we wanted to put a top-notch event in an area that we felt was underserved, now it's definitely the drool of the North Valley. We thank all of the support that we've got, and we appreciate it once again. If you get a chance, please come out and join us, if you've not seen one or participated in one, this is definitely something you'd like to come out and experience. Thank you very much for your guys' support.
Very good, colleagues, let's give them a big round of applause, it's not an easy event to put on.
Right.
It's about health and fitness, it's the only one recognized by the US Olympic Committee.
And Mr. Blumenthal wants to comment that.
Well, I want to first thank my colleague, Mr. Fuentes, for doing this, it's a great project. I'm impressed that you're actually gonna be part of this, you're putting us to shame, you know, I can barely walk around my block without getting winded, and you're talking about doing triathlon, that's amazing. I also wanted to make a special comment about the chairman of this triathlon committee, who, someone I may have known for 24 years, and I always knew you knew how to organize people, how to march, because you helped put together the Veterans Day Parade, and we worked on that together, and was one of the founder of the Veterans Day Parade, but to see that you actually know how to organize people to swim and bike and run is pretty impressive, so just wanted to add my voice and echo and congratulate Mr. Fuentes for doing this, and Mr. Flores and the whole team for making this happen for our health and for encouraging everyone to get that kind of camaraderie, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal and Mr. Fuentes, Fred, everybody there, the lifeguards, it's all about neighborhood, it's all about Hanson Dam, the gateway to the Angeles National Force, the Dahanga Wash, all of that, it's gonna be a great day and good luck. Right off the 2:10, do you accept early arrivals if they come?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just, anybody listening, just come out to Hanson Dam.
Come out to Hanson Dam before 6 o'clock, though, because we shut that road off, our first wave goes out at 6:30.
All right, very good, Fred, just have him a big hand, good job, Mr. Fuentes, thank you. Hey Sergeant, could you check, is Mark Finukian here? Mark Finukian still in chambers? If he is, please come to the ropes. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to call on the President of the City Council for his special presentation with our Animal Services Department.
Thank you, Mr. President, and let's put Speedy up here. Thank you, Mr. President, and members, today again is one of my favorite days, it is Dog Adoption Friday, and before us today is a young man named Speedy. Speedy, and Speedy he is, is one-year-old, he is a mixed terrier, he has all of his shots, he's microchipped, and he's ready to go home with you today. Now, I think you want to show the other end to the public, Speedy, I, you're a little more attractive this way, but many of you that are here know that we take our saving the lives of pets very seriously, and for, I think, since the beginning that I've been here, we've had a pet adoption program, and every dog that I have brought before this council has been adopted. We have a 100% adoption rate, and I'd like to make sure that that rate continues. Not only when you adopt whoever is gonna adopt Speedy today, will you get unconditional love, what you're doing, you are literally saving a life. We have shelters throughout the city of Los Angeles, we do everything that we can to get our animals adopted, but there are too many, and we cannot do this alone, so we need help from the public, help from the individuals that are here in the chambers today to find a home for this good-looking young man. A significant percentage of the animals, dogs in particular, that we've had adopted are from workers and spouses and friends of the individuals that literally work in this building or work for the city of Los Angeles. So I am making a request to send young Speedy home with a brand-new family, a brand-new mom and dad, and it appears that Speedy is gonna be very good with children, so at this point, I'd like to again make a plea that he be adopted, and I also want to announce that all of our shelters, our six shelters in the city of LA, from the 16th of August through the 24th, we're having Discount Adoption Week, where we have, their slogan is "Hot Dogs and Cool Cats," where there's a reduction in the adoption cost. So please, and if I could ask our great volunteer from Animal Services, maybe you could show Speedy around to the folks behind me, and again, I urge you, let's keep our 100% adoption rate alive, and let's find Speedy a home today. Mr. President and members, thank you very much, we'll have Speedy over to the side if individuals want to come take pictures, or, you know, want to just come see how he acts around other people, so he'll be waiting for his new mom or new dad at the side and back of the chambers, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar, and thank our Animal Services, and we thank Speedy and all his cool cats and dog friends, thank you. Mr. Clerk, let's take up item number 2, I think, at this time.
Very good, that's item 2 called special for Councilmember Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and if we could ask our Commissioner, Mr. Weisson, to please come up to the front table, and I just wanted to thank you for your willingness to serve on this commission, and I thought I'd introduce you to our council, should they see who is the new appointee to our great El Pueblo Commission, which is the birthplace of the city of Los Angeles, and certainly plays an important role, not only for attracting tourism and economic development for the city, but a great historical place for all of us to see the history of this great city. A few years ago, well, actually, when I first got elected back in 2006, one big issue was the rents of the place for the merchants, it was considered the third rail of Council District 14 politics, nobody wanted to touch them because of the volatility, but thankfully, we came up to a solution that I think is fair to the city, was fair to the merchants, and my sense is that after that, we've had relatively calm in the area in terms of some of the biggest tension issues, but the area certainly has a lot more potential to expand, to grow. The county not only opened up the Plaza across the street, which talks about Latino and Mexican history in the city of Los Angeles, there's also a proposal by the county to expand tremendously the area with new retail homes. The nice thing about El Pueblo is that it's been quaint, it's been slow to grow, and we want to strike that balance, keep its authenticity, but at the same time, realize potential for future growth that fits in line with that authenticity. So I wanted to just ask you your thoughts, if you could first state your name and a little bit about you, and just share with us some of your thoughts about your role on this commission.
My name is Robert Vincent, I'm a second-generation Angelino, and my familiarity with El Pueblo actually goes back to my grandfather, Robert Montano, who had a woodworking business not far from El Pueblo back in the day, and my family had traditionally, on weekends, gone to Alus del Día for lunch, where they make handmade tortillas, and actually, my mother, who's with us, has a picture of her in front of the cross right by Alus del Día. So the Pueblo has been very close to my family and myself, but more important, the Pueblo is a huge part of the living history of Los Angeles, and I believe that as such, it needs to be upgraded to make it more accessible to everybody who wants to see it, and that means making it accessible to folks who are disabled, it means expanding the restrooms, it means added parking, making it an experience that more people will have access to and can enjoy.
Thank you, and along with some of the rent issues that we've resolved, we've had a few victories along the way as well, such as the Siciero's mural, that we worked with the Getty to unveil, one of the great murals in the city of LA that for a long time had been neglected. We are working with Councilmember Buscaino to revive the Italian Hall, a great treasure there that reminds us of the diversity of the birthplace of this city. We have the Chinese-American Museum that we are currently undergoing some expansion, and the lease was finally resolved, but we have some great treasures there, and I think it is great to not only preserve those, keep its authenticity, but also that if you have any ideas you would like to share with our office, or work with the fellow commissioners on how we could continue to expand the potential that it has, we're looking forward to working with you, so thank you for your willingness to serve and provide your time to this very important commission, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say that I've known Robert for a long time, and he's sharp and knowledgeable and hardworking and connected to this important historic area, perhaps in terms of the city's history, the most important part of the city, and I know that we can trust you to work hard and focus on this and help make it an even better place, so I appreciate the fact that you're willing to dedicate the time to this and look forward to working with you on it.
Thank you for your confidence.
Thank you, no other speakers except Mr. Ofero, just push his button right there.
And, Mr. Vincent, thank you, Mr. Vincent came through my committee and answered questions, and we got to know him a little bit, so I'm very comfortable with his appointment, but I just want to echo my colleague, Jose Wezar's concerns, he really outlaid the vision beautifully for the commission work that you'll be engaged in in relation to bringing up to standard El Pueblo and the surrounding area. It's such an opportunity to really bring everything up to 2014 standards and help create a vibrant neighborhood at the civic center, so I think that you're very capable in helping to fulfill that vision, and I'm very excited to have you on this commission, so congratulations and thanks for your volunteering to do so.
Thank you.
Then no other speakers on the queue, all I want to echo is the MTA's doing a master plan for Union Station, connect with the Union Station, a bike rental facility should be on the Pueblo, I've asked for years on that, I hope you could push that, all over the world, people have bike rental facilities in their heart. And then lastly, Yang Chow should have a little place next to the Chinese-American Museum on Sanchez Alley, and also the big walk coming up, coming up for our city's birthday. Thank you for your interest, support, and let's call, let's open the roll. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Congratulations, thank you and the staff.
Thank you all very much.
Over El Pueblo and the commission. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, the reports for items 4, 5, 6, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 16 have been circulated, those items are now before council for consideration.
Any specials on those items, members? No comments? No comments, no specials? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
15 eyes, so ordered, next item. 18, please.
Very good, sir, item 18 called special for cards.
Walsh, John Walsh. HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting @HollywoodDems. This is number 18, again, it's reap, this means that landlord has not repaired violations in your unit, and the city of Los Angeles is getting tough on them, and if they don't repair your unit, and the violations in your unit that you've complained about, I'm speaking to the general public that lives in LA, the, then, the rent does not go to the landlord, the rent goes to the city until things are repaired. Remember, when you do a good job, I'm the first to praise you, when you do a terrible job, I'm the first to condemn you. HollywoodHighlands.org. No other calls, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Thank you, what's the next item, Mr. Clerk?
Item 19, called special for cards.
Mr. Clerk, would you give me the copy of the card you have, because I don't have 19 in this file. John Walsh. John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, this is outrageous, this is bonding for over $7 million in bonds, the issuance of city bonds, for a charter middle school. Charter schools, let me tell you, when I stood in front of students at LAUSD, I had to pass a state test, I had, which took nine hours, nine hours, everybody, and had to have all sorts of degrees, and in order to teach at LAUSD, if you're a charter school, they can pick you up off the street and put you in front of students, that's the way it runs. Charter schools are on the way out, we had a vote just the other day, charter schools lost, the, most of the people on the city Board of Education are against charter schools, and you're gonna give them $9 million of our money? HollywoodHighlands.org, no. Okay, that's before us now. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
15 eyes, let's call number 20.
Item 20 called special for cards.
Mr. Herman.
Angelinos, and all of you here in the crowd representing Los Angeles, we're talking about a relative amending council action for July 2nd regarding the allocations of $60,000 in the cultural community events funding for the Northeast Jazz Festival, and we have to thank our councilmen, the best councilmen, who actually pays attention to us, Mr. Gilbert Sadio. Thank you, Mr. Sadio, for saving our parks, especially Griffith Park, but I'm gonna stay on topic, because I don't want Mr. Labonge to say that I'm disruptive and unorganizing my thoughts. So, again, we're amending this allocation of $60,000 in the cultural and community events funding, again, for the Jazz Festival. Don't we all love music? What does music do for us as a body of people? It makes us want to dance, makes us want to groove, and that's jazz music for all of us. I wish I would've came prepared for a song to sing to you, Mr. Sadio, but again, thank you, Mr. Sadio, for all your actions, for cultural and community actions that you do. I know many times I'm not the best speaker, or the most intelligent speaker like Mr. Kocorian, but I try my best to represent all the Angelinos, all you citizens of Los Angeles, all of you who listen to HollywoodHighland.org, representing you in Los Angeles, it is I. So I came prepared in a bowtie, so that I could look as elegant and as charming as you 15 members of the council. So, Mr. Fuentes, I'm sure he's gonna work on the issue of refugees coming here from Mexico, and at the same point, Mr. Price is gonna make sure that the felonies of his staff are removed, thank you.
John Walsh. John Walsh, blogging day and night at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting day or night @HollywoodDems. Now, we supported this when it came up here on July 2nd, it was $60,000 for the Northeast Jazz Festival, that sounds like, you know, you can put on a pretty damn good jazz festival for $60,000, but then they went to Sadio and Price, and they had a friend they wanted to give $10,000 to. So what, they come back, they're gonna add $10,000, it's $70,000, you'll see nothing in the agenda as to why we have to pay another $10,000. You know, $10,000 here, $10,000 here, there, it begins to add up, but remember, that $10,000 could be used to repair the pipes in this city, it's not gonna be used, it's gonna be used for some jazzbo friend. $60,000 is enough for a jazz festival. HollywoodHighlands.org. All right, no other speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
So ordered, next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 21, called special for cards.
21, called special by cards, thank you. Arnold Sachs, from Redondo Beach, California.
Arnold Sachs from Redondo Beach, California.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Labon. And in Redondo Beach, they also have problems with overtime. Again, it's that same, that vicious word. $38,000 in overtime salaries. People complain about a $10,000 allocation for a jazz festival, but they don't complain about overtime. And yet, any good business manager would tell you the one cost you can control is payroll. The most glaring cost you can control is payroll. And what's the city always managed to do? Allocate funding for overtime. So either the council doesn't get it or the management of the departments don't get it. But if you check with any private enterprise, payroll, 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 payroll. Watch your overtime. Except in the city. It doesn't make sense.
John Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Herman.
First and foremost, Ms. Castillo, you're very beautiful. But let me continue with city business now. Thank you. A transfer, oh, wait a minute. Look, give her a round of applause, folks. Come on. Yeah. Yeah, look at her. So now, on topic of conversation of business, motion by Bloomfield and Fuentes, relative costs associated with the overtime labor and materials to install a turn light. A ridiculous turn light that would cost you and I, the taxpayers, a small amount of $60,000 for the Coenga Corridor specific plan. But yet, todos nosotros angelinos in CD14, it takes 10 years to get a light in our specific area. So I say to all of you, when we fix L.A., we're going to come to Mr. Bloomfield and Mr. Fuentes for they have the potential, yes, little potential to make things happen. And so when we talk about a motion for what? Here we go. $38,000 from the fund of the Transportation 100/94 account. And let's talk about the $16,000 for transportation funds, account number. Come on, young man, there you go. Say hello to her. All right. To paint and sign maintenance and repairs. Again, stick to the real business of issues. Fix our streets. Fix L.A. And do more for our signals because we've become the hit-and-run capital of the world because John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, has stated it for the record. Fix our light.
Let's open the roll on this matter. Open the roll, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes. Mr. Clerk, twenty-three has one card. Mr. Herman, where are you? Mr. Herman? Come up here real quick, Mr. Herman. No, no, not Mr. Herman, Mr. Sachs. You don't have one. You've already spoken. Please sit down. Please sit down.
Twenty-three called Special for Cards.
Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you again, Councilman Labon. And Redondo Beach has problems with its parks, too. And that's exactly what Quimby fees are for and the allocation and how they're spent. And the rules around the Quimby fees is the funding needs to go within a three-mile diameter of where the construction of the new apartments take place. So how does the city explain the use of Quimby fees for the park they just bought over here at Spring and First? The sum of Quimby fees, almost $7 million, when the three miles around the area from wherever they were collected is so park-poor, park-neglected. $7 million for one park here doesn't make sense.
All right, that completes public comment on this item. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes. So ordered. Now, Mr. Wezar of the 14th District. Straighten your tie. Get looking good because you're making a presentation now, Mr. Wezar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Labon. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm very honored to be standing here next to a woman who is not only a world-renowned actress, but also an activist that works on issues to protect our loving friends, the animals, and also to ensure that we protect and serve the issue of human trafficking. And aside from doing all this work, you could tell that her fan base loves her, both on the screen and for the work she does. And I'm talking about none other than Kate Del Castillo, who's with us here today in the city of Los Angeles. And we're honored as well to be here today representing the Mexican Council General Carlos Sada, who cannot be with us today. But Mario Perez is here representing the Council General. And we want to thank you and also thank you to Kate's special guests and friends who have joined us today. You know, Kate has enjoyed a varied and successful career in film, theater, and television with more than 50 motion pictures and television series to her name. But you're a lot younger than doing 50 motion pictures.
Not really.
She is the daughter of Kate Trillo and Eric Del Castillo, a legend of the Mexican cinema's golden era. Kate began acting at a young age, but it was her role in the telenovela Muchachitas that propelled her career forward and led her to her starring in nine telenovelas, including La Mona and La Mentira. She is truly an international artist whose career has taken her to many continents and produced fans and admirers from throughout the world. Her work epitomizes what great actors seek out to do, and that is take on roles that challenge them, push them beyond their comfort zone, and allow them to use their talents to move us, to make us all think about our own lives and realities and the world around us. And that's what Kate has done throughout her career over and over again, no matter what role she was asked to do. The one thing her characters always have is an equal mix of strength and vulnerability. Kate's characters can make you cry or put you six feet under if you mess with her. She is widely known in Mexico, throughout Latin America, and among Latinos and fans of telenovelas here in Los Angeles and throughout the nation. She is also known to American audiences for many roles, including her role in the PBS Golden Globe nominated series, American Family, with our very own Edward James Olmos, who many of you know. And she also came in her role in the Showtime hit, Weeds. One of Kate's most popular roles was the recent Telemundo miniseries, La Reina del Sur. I paused because I knew that would get a woo. It's based on a novel by Spanish author Arturo Pérez Rivera. La Reina del Sur depicts the story of the rise of Teresa Mendoza, a young woman from Mexico who becomes the most powerful drug trafficker in southern Spain. It was Telemundo's highest-rated premiere for a telenovela to date, frequently dominating its time slot even over English-language programming on other major U.S. networks. The final episode was the highest-rated broadcast in Telemundo's 19-year history with 4.2 million viewers tuning in. And I think I remember that day because I couldn't get in touch with anybody when I was trying to call them. La Reina del Sur made its way around the world into 86 countries and has been translated into 17 languages. Its popularity is understandable. La Reina del Sur broke new ground for telenovelas with a storytelling style that resisted melodrama and focused on characters, dialogue, mood, and style, and really elevated the genre of telenovelas. In the end, Kate's character is content without the romantic ending of so many other telenovelas, where this one, she doesn't end up needing a man to be happy. She is her own heroine at the end of this telenovela. And in the film, La Misma Luna, Kate played a single mother who moves to Los Angeles from Mexico in search of a better life, leaving her nine-year-old son in the care of her grandmother while she works to provide for him. Unexpected circumstances led Rosario and her son to embark on their own journeys in attempt to reunite, and both face challenges along the way, but they never lose hope. The film was shot in Mexico and in Los Angeles, including the east side in Council District 14 of Boyle Heights. What is special about this film is that it resonates with a number of issues that we are dealing with right now, where families are separated because of a broken immigration system that we have in this country. And Kate will return to Telemundo this year with another miniseries called Dueños del Paraíso. She also has five movies set for release this year. Is that public? It is public already, right?
Yes.
Including acclaimed director Guillermo del Toro's The Book of Life, as well as the eagerly anticipated the 33 co-starring Antonio Banderas and based on the true story of the 33 Chilean miners trapped underground for 69 days following a mine collapse. So make sure to look out for these films later this year. Offscreen, and one of the reasons we're here with her today is that she has been an activist who was named the ambassador of the Mexican Commission on Human Rights to combat human trafficking. In 2009, yes, that does deserve an applause. In 2009, she launched the Blue Heart Campaign along with the United Nations Goodwill Ambassador, Mira Sorvina, to raise awareness and fight against human trafficking in Latin America. For her work on this important issue, Kate Del Castillo was honored alongside Marian Gonzalez Del Castillo at People in Espanol's 25 Most Powerful Latinas Luncheon in Miami for bringing awareness and aiding victims of human trafficking and sex slavery. Kate is an exemplary artist and activist who is a role model for Latinas and all of us, but really for all of us, not only for her successful career, but also for her compassion, activism, and passion and that she brings to everything she does and cares for. But what also makes today very special is that Ms. Kate Del Castillo calls Los Angeles home. Like many other, like many other Mexican-born activists, actors who have become to the eye of the public, she is showing what biculturalism means today, that despite us having borders, people can live on both sides of our countries, show people on both sides of the borders what it means to be human, what it means to be a great example for all of us. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank Kate Del Castillo for being a great angelino, being a role model to many of us, showing what we can do when we not only reach success in our own profession, but take that to help others. And in your case, not only helping in human trafficking, but also with PETA and helping our loved ones, our four-legged friends that we all love. So thank you so much, Kate. And on behalf of the city council here, our mayor, I'd like to present you this resolution and congratulate you for all you've done and thank you for all you've done. Felicidades.
Gracias.
Pos mi politica es a la izquierda. Deja que para acá otro ratito. Otro ratito aquí a la izquierda.
Tienes más cámaras allá.
Sí, verdad. Thank you. And now, ladies and gentlemen. I'll take it.
This is amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Kate Del Castillo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wezar. This is such a day. What an honor to be here. This is the first time that I'm here. What an amazing place. And thank you, thank you, city of Los Angeles, for giving me this honor. I don't even know what to say. Thank you for saying my entire resume. That was boring, maybe. No, I'm kidding. But I'm pretty happy. I want to tell you that ever since I got here in Los Angeles, windows were open. Doors were open. And sometimes in our own country, there are doors that are shut. You know, so for me, coming here was a big challenge. Leaving everything that I had, leaving even a name, even a career, and coming to Los Angeles was a big challenge. And a big challenge that I would never regret, that I'm very, very happy because just coming here really opened me many, many doors, even in my own country. So thank you so much. Thank you, Los Angeles, because, yes, this is home for me now. I will always be Mexican, Mexico. But Los Angeles is now my home when I, where I have my house, where I created my little daughter, who's my dog. And we have a life here. So I love it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Very good, Kate. Good job, Kate. Mr. Wezar, thank you so much.
Thank you. Let me say a few words here. Thank you so much. And it shows that even if you reach success in Latin America, people are still coming to the United States and to Los Angeles in particular to reach the American dream. As Kate mentioned, when she got here, a lot of doors were open. A lot of opportunities were open. And that's what Los Angeles is all about. No matter where you come from in this world, no matter where you start off in this life, Los Angeles is the city of opportunity. Gracias a la prensa en español. Los esperamos acá atrás. Vamos a tener una conferencia de prensa con el señor Elita Kate Del Castillo. Muchísimas gracias. Adelante.
Thank you very much. Get a great shot. So we'll let our guest move, Sergeant. If you could put it back in order. Mr. Clerk, we have things back in order. Thank you very much. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings council back to items one, B, C, D, E, and G called Special for Cards.
Thank you. Patricia Mendoza. Ms. Mendoza.
Yes, good morning. I'm kind of confused here. Is it going to be continued for August 28, 29, sir? Or do I speak or I speak that?
Feel free to speak right now, and we'll get a signal in a minute. Building in safety, please.
This item is going to be continued for two weeks. I think it's to August 29th. Secondly, she's not the property owner, so she doesn't have a standing at the hearing. And maybe you might have read in the newspapers lately some of the use of city employees for some of the different inspections that go on. It's good to hear or read, depending, that DWP has had a 300% increase in its number of inspectors for wayward water wasters from one to four. But there are no inspectors for rundown properties, for your foreclosed property ordinance. There's even an inspector who's checking on plastic bags, but she's not an inspector for the Department of Plastic Bags. She's an inspector, or she works for Public Works. So these inspectors who go out for code violations, do they all work for building and safety? Or do they work for other departments and get pulled into doing inspections for this? Because if that's what's happening, you're having them inspect properties for nickels and dimes when you have a foreclosed ordinance for $1,000 a day that you haven't collected a penny on in four years.
Mr. Herman is the next speaker. You have one minute, Mr. Herman.
Angelinos and residents of Los Angeles, how many times have you heard our lien process here go from bad to worse and never accomplish a damn thing? We have Ms. Mendoza, who was up here, the first speaker, a woman, and then we also have the gentleman, Mr. Ken, who's going to come up here and speak on his item, CD8, 6830 South Crenshaw Boulevard, for $10,000. When does it end? The quality of life of people is they need their homes and not to become homeless, and they do not have the ability to pay certain amounts like this, Mr. Kocorian, who's eating your Lay's chips and didn't offer me one? So in no, the predatory liens are obvious. H-N-I-C, H-N-I-C. Who's in charge? Who's in charge? Herb Weston or Mr. Parks? Take care of business.
Mr. Walsh. Forgive me for mispronouncing your last name.
Do I begin now, sir? Okay, I have an apparent lien being placed on a property, and the lien I just was notified this month about. I spoke to the inspector, I instructed, explained to him, these liens and the inspections are being done on tenants that are not even at the property. These tenants are not at the property, haven't been at the property, they do mobile work, they just have their license at the property. I don't even know these people. So until this is adjusted or put to a position to where I can understand it or it makes sense, not only don't I have the ability to pay, I will pursue whatever is necessary, but it is not valid, and no one seems to want to take any interest in it. Basically, using me in a position of extortion, basically. I'm a property owner, or my family owns the property, this is my only income, and now they're trying to basically say, you owe this money. There is a tenant there, and he's willing to pay, but he's not going to be harassed to the point of saying $10,000 is what he owes. And I'd like it resolved, I'd like it resolved today if possible. This is the first time I'm in this place, and I'd like to speak to someone or have someone adjust it. The inspector says he doesn't know anything about it, they don't have records to show.
Okay, thank you very much. Lorenzo from the Eighth District, please, he's going to help you right there. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Jose Vasquez. Oh, good, okay. Is Jose here? Jose Vasquez? Yes.
Item 1B, would like to continue that. We want to work with the property owner if we can continue it for two weeks.
1B, continue for two weeks.
Thank you, sir.
That completes the cards on that. Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, 1D is before you, however, he, the property owner, is meeting with staff on the side. Did you want to vote on 1D as well, or would you like to lay that one on the desk?
I can lay it on the desk.
Very good, sir.
If it's okay with you. Lay that on the desk. And if we get it resolved, or we'll continue, or we'll make that determination. So on the balance, Mr. Clerk, you got it squared away?
Yes, sir, that's C, E, and G.
Let's open the roll on the balance. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 eyes?
15 eyes, okay. Special announcement, 1,000% adoption rate, Mr. President, Mr. Weston. Mitchell Farrell, you speedy, and I hope you call George to tell him you're bringing someone home tonight. Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I want to forthwith on 5, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16. Those are the parking districts, as well as the 4 and 6.
Very good, sir.
The Griffith Park issues. Thank you. Fourth with. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 24. It was called Special by Cards. Further, there is a 24A amending motion, Price O'Farrell, that has been circulated and is now before you.
Okay, so let's open the roll on that. What do we want, Mr. Clerk?
You should first take the cards, sir.
Oh, on 24, I apologize. Arnold Sacks?
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. And the Housing Community Investment Department is the council's answer, the mayor's new answer for the HACLA, the Housing Authority of Los Angeles. And so they, under the pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, very, very considerate that DWP, excuse me, not DWP, the Department of Water is under the pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, because the Department of Power doesn't make a payment in lieu of taxes to the city. $8 million in revenue bonds. I'm wondering if the city is considering, you know, they were thinking about a half-cent sales tax for street maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, whatever maintenance, load of crap, but what about bonds for the streets? What about bonds for the sidewalk? Well, you really can't do the streets because you have the infrastructure underground, which is totally a wreck. But the County Board of Supervisors, I believe, two weeks ago, did a mass sale of bonds for LAUSD for over $4 billion. $4 billion in bonds, I believe it covered five bonds. $4 billion, that's more money than, believe it or not, than the Downtown Connector and the Crenshaw Light Rail Line together. And they're issuing $4 billion in bonds. Why is the city not looking at bonds for its infrastructure repair work? Just a question. Somebody could answer it?
Okay, good. John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. I read the agenda package. When I get up here, I don't talk off the top of my head and just put you down. Now, this is an $8 million bond, tax-exempt, to build low-cost housing on 62nd Place. This is in a minority neighborhood. This is an excellent bond. Read what it says. It says that it is known as a limited obligation bond. It says here, the city will in no way be obligated to make payments on the bonds. The money comes out of the rents and out of the... So this is an excellent bond. I don't just get up here and say, oh, you're all a bunch of crooks, and I live in Los Angeles and moved here in 1966. 100%, you're doing a good job on this issue, which makes when I tell you how terrible you are, that makes it more believable.
That completes the cards. Mr. Englander.
Consider item 15 and continue it for a week.
All right, but hold on just a second. We've got to finish 24 first. Mr. Kocorian.
Oh, he's telling 24?
24.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify again, for the sake of the public, that these bonds are pass-through vehicles, they don't have any impact on the city's bonding capacity, and they don't have any impact on the general fund whatsoever.
No other speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes?
15 eyes. Mr. Englander.
Against her, that's 24 as amended by 24A.
24 as amended. Mr. Englander, to clarification.
Yeah, if we could just reconsider item 15 for continuance for one week.
Very good. That's okay, without objection. And 24, fourth with. 24, fourth with.
Mr. President, was 15 continued one week, sir?
One week, as requested by the fine councilman of the 12th District.
Very good, and that's August 22nd.
Thank you. And I'd like to call on Mr. Sadio right now for a very special announcement.
Not ready yet. Are we ready?
Yes.
Mr. President, there's been a request to send item 24 forthwith.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, members.
To Sadio.
Yes, Mr. President, and members, this is one of those sad days that's part of the reality of our experiences as council members. We hire young people, they're very talented, we nurture them, we try to develop their skills, and then on some occasions, others observe their talent, and they steal them. They poach them. They raid them. None at all. So after you invest all these years and time of trying to shape and mold great minds and great energy, someone with a bigger check than the City of Los Angeles can pay just comes and steals all your work. So anyway, God bless him, St. John's Community Clinics. Freddie Sahai met six years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah. He's a great leader, he's on many community boards, comes out of the Pat Brown Institute. I got to meet him in my campaign. Very sharp. Few young people are focused on policy as this young man was. Very focused on how things work and how things should work, and it's just been a real privilege and a real honor to work with him, to watch him grow. When we came here to the council, we asked him to do something different, and that was to work in our communications department. And while that's not his training, that's not what he was working on in the past, he did a great job. And for those who are in our network, we have a newsletter that goes out every Friday at noon, and it covers everything we did the week before and gives you an outline of what we're going to do the next week. And so he's one of our stars, he's one of the persons that we can always count on, he's one of the stalwarts and pillars of Team Sadio, and he is now moving on to a new job with a lot bigger salary and a lot more responsibility. And we want to wish him well, but he's always going to be part of Team Sadio. As I say, he's going to be being paid by someone else, but he's always going to be working for me. So anyway, with that, let me give this to Freddie Sahai, one of our top stars of our office, who retires today. Thank you so much. Love you both.
Yeah, I have a speaker here. Mr. Bonin wants to add a few words, as well as Mr... Go ahead.
I'll wait for the photo. Thank you. I wanted to rise and say a few words about Freddie, too. While he may be a member of Team Sadio, even before he was a member of Team Sadio, I knew of Freddie's work in the LGBT community. I knew of him as a guy who got things done, a guy who helped weave community together, a guy who stood for social justice, a guy who had both big heart and a lot of smarts. And I look forward, while you may be leaving City Hall, I actually suspect you'll be back sitting around the horseshoe at some point in maybe a decade or so when Mr. Sadio is done. But while you're leaving City Hall, I know that you won't be leaving the LGBT community and your leadership role there, and I know you won't be leaving the fight for social justice, and I look forward to continuing to work with you outside of the building. Thank you, Freddie.
Thank you very much. Freddie, say something. Come on, one minute there.
This is awkward. I think the first time I was ever up at this microphone, I was advocating for HIV funding, something to do with the AIDS Coordinator's Office, and I was up here crying because I was telling my story. And it's really nice to have been part of the inside, inner workings of City Hall. And now as an outsider, not as an outsider, but as a member of the community, as a member of a nonprofit, I hope to continue working with the council and want to thank council member Sadio for all his hard work. We've been through a lot of good fights up in Sacramento, the California Dream Act and the driver's license that's now rolling out, and it's going to be a reality for many Californians. But a lot of the work that I've done in the community has come, has... I've been allowed to do all that community work because of Sadio's leadership and the fact that he let me work on all these different issues. And like he says, it's an extension of what he does. We fight for people, we fight for social justice, for change, and that's what we're going to continue to do. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Caretz for a special presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this time to recognize an incredible group of individuals who have been a huge help to my office for this summer and months earlier.
Hold you right there. Go right over to the center, because you've got a lot of individuals there, and I don't want them to get... You could start over. Mr. Clerk, start his time again. Mr. Caretz.
Well, I searched the world to find the best interns for my office, and I'd like to briefly introduce each of them. First, I'll mention one, I'm going to do this alphabetically, so first I'll mention the one that isn't here, Anna Morelli, who's a master student at the prestigious University of California, Los Angeles, visiting us for her studies from Italy, and we hope she'll pursue a PhD at UCLA so we can host her once again here at City Hall. Also, I'd like to introduce... I think the first time I was ever up at this microphone, I was advocating for HIV funding, something to do with the AIDS Coordinator's Office, and I was up here crying because I was telling my story. And it's really nice to have been part of the inside, inner workings of City Hall. And now as an outsider, not as an outsider, but as a member of the community, as a member of a nonprofit, I hope to continue working with the council and wanna thank Councilmember Sadio for all his hard work. We've been through a lot of good fights up in Sacramento, the California Dream Act and the driver's license that's now rolling out, and it's gonna be a reality for many Californians. But a lot of the work that I've done in the community has come, has, has, I've been allowed to do all that community work because of Sadio's, uh, leadership and the fact that he let me work on all these different issues. And like he says, it's an extension of what he does. We fight for people, we fight for social justice, for change, and that's what we're gonna continue to do. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Caretz for a special presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this time to recognize an incredible group of individuals who have been a huge help to my office for this summer and months earlier.
Hold you right there. Go right over to the center, because you got a lot of individuals there, and I don't want them to get, not, you can start over. Mr. Clerk, start his time again. Mr. Caretz.
Well, I searched the world to find the best interns for my office, and I'd like to briefly introduce each of them. First I'll mention one, I'm gonna do this alphabetically, so first I'll mention the one that isn't here, Anna Morelli, who's a master student at the prestigious University of California, Los Angeles, visiting us for her studies from Italy. And we hope she'll pursue a PhD at UCLA so we can host her once again here at City Hall. Also, I'd like to introduce Nika Giyasi, who's also a student at UCLA, is from, and is from, as she says, the beautiful nation of Persia. She's been vital, vital to my work on the Energy and Environment Committee, so I'd like to present her with a certificate. And to prove the third time as a charm, another intern from UCLA is Maynak Kanodia, who is here in Los Angeles from India. And he is primarily focused on research and helping with our Energy and Environment Committee The next wonderful member of my team of interns is a resident of CD5, Jonathan Lowenberg. He's beginning his second year at Johns Hopkins and has been vital in keeping every piece of the Caretz machine in working order. He found us simply by going to the city website with a desire to volunteer his time, and my legislative deputy, Brian Perry, refers to him as Superman. And last but not least, another member of these superheroes is Andrew Rodriguez from LA County, and he will be returning to Rutgers University in the fall. And I just found out that he's been a member of the city family for a number of years and that his uncle is a longtime city employee. And his parents are here with us, so let's give him a hand as well. Although I don't have a cert form, I'll mention another prior intern, recent intern, Steve Garcia. He didn't get a cert because he never left and we hired him, but we thank him for his internship as well. So I thank all of you for your incredible work. There are a lot of things that we couldn't have done without you, you've made a big impact on this city, so thank you all.
Mr. Caretz, such a nice presentation. Congratulations to all of you. I hope you all been to the top of City Hall, right? Very good, very good. You been to the top?
Yeah.
Good job. Congratulations. Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, one D still remains. There's been a request from member to continue that item to September 16. Again, that's one, one D.
So ordered without objection. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings council to general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Brian Barajas.
Um, I guess today, I wanna make it simple. Please log to LaRouchePac.com, it will be a webcast. But the intention is going to reorient the thought, the mind of the American person. Obviously, we have a problem. We don't have an imagination fit for civilization as a whole. Now, where are we going once we prevent World War III and get a couple of representatives, whoever they are, active in discussing the future instead of the past? Now, I think, uh, the future, I think I have to leave it like this. If we do not eliminate the empire, I cannot guarantee the survival of this civilization. Right now, you're looking at a breakdown crisis. We do not have, I think, the intelligence, the integral intelligence to subsume the problem. I think what is required now, I think what is necessary now in order to bring civilization back, I think the problem here has to do with the principle of the mind as such. And that's something I think people have to get aware of. I, uh, I have to say that for my challenges to confront people with that, do you have a mind? Do you think about the future or not? And if anybody wants to join me, I'm going to Bassetta right now.
Mr. Herman.
Censorship is unwelcome in Los Angeles to the civility and the decorum to a formula. You will tolerate the personal attacks by federal ruling August 7, 2013. But I'm gonna bring this important media attention. The money withheld from the pay of each temporary public employee by authority of the mayor and the city council, HACLA board, as shown in temp MOUs, bitch, provide the major mayor and each publicity named body to fundamentally do its duty to protect and serve these funds in the future. However, the records show that each publicity of public named bodies that choose to grant building trades, fund trustees, temporary custodies of these publicly sheltered funds failed. Consequently, lasers and calpers were denied custody of these funds for decades, more than 90 days after the craftsmen were employed for the past six months. California law. In addition, I'm not gonna talk about the other issues of your censorship and violation of the Brown Act. Cure and correct your issues. You're wrong when you do the censorship for this process. In addition, it is still the fiduciary duty of the mayor and this board, HACLA, and the city council and the city attorney to recover the public funds placed in custody of building trade funds, trustees in the past and in the future. Thank you, thank you in advance. And this is going to the media. This will go to the attention of the media because you're not going to abuse the workers of the city of Los Angeles any longer. MOU is a bitch.
John Walsh. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Hundreds of people showed up here today to support Agenda Item 3, which was a condemnation of the bombing of Gaza on women and children. Unfortunately, Islamophobes such as Mr. Krikorian over here were able to take it off the agenda. The blood is still there. And remember, my grandmother is a Jew, and that makes me a Jew, my mother's a Jew too. African-Americans had a gigantic victory at the polls, the Wesson Ridley Thomas candidate was destroyed at the polls, and Mr. McKenna is our new city, our new, uh, member of the Board of Education. There's a $7.5 billion, come to my website, brown water bill, vote against brown water. What they wanna do is build two tunnels to suck the delta dry to come down to Central California so they can give the water to Republican agribusiness and then come down here and give the water to huge developers in, in LA. Vote no on Prop 1, the brown water bill. Vote no on Prop 1, because it's a lot of, uh, number one, because it's a lot of number two. As far as having a lottery, it's against the law. And giving out cash prizes to people who vote? No, 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 equal protection under the law. Pay everybody to vote or don't have cash prizes to vote, and incidentally, it's against the law to pay someone to vote. This is the stupidest idea I have ever heard from the Ethics Commission, pay people to vote. HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh Confidential, everything I said in detail is up there now. HollywoodHighlands.org. Robert Lucas.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Robert Lucas. You know, I'll have a mission statement for you next week. I just have to say, if you've ever been to a baseball game and seen a mascot on the field, you know, they're really not involved in paying attention to what's going on. But you know what's really funny when they get hit with a baseball? It's funny to watch, because they're there, they're entertaining, but they're actually doing nothing. Uh, I, I need to bring you some good news. I'm so plugged into the city right now, I spend all day feet on the ground. There's so much going on. My heart is filled with such warmth with what this board represents and the people that you represent. There's people doing work out there nobody else wants to do with a smile on their face and greetings. When you make somebody's day with a pleasant comment, this is what happens. They give you things. I was given this shirt by somebody that I didn't even know witnessing something that was going on. It meant so much to me. The fact is, you guys sent a lot of resources down to Skid Row. I need to let you know how much I appreciate some of the things that you've done. You've ridden it of a lot of vermin down there with some of the chemical treatment. Believe me when I say, on a daily basis, I'm trying to get rid of the bigger ones. I have a lot of support from Central, I tried to volunteer there, unfortunately, my past is haunting me, and that's okay. It's very important for me to keep you aware of what's going on out there in a good way. It's very easy to read that paper and pick apart what's wrong. It's another thing to come in here with some experience out there, boots on the ground, and deliver you the pulse of what's going on here. I love you all.
Henry Marine.
Yes, some of you received correspondence from me the other day, and I'm just gonna read it for you right here. "To whom it may concern on or after 8/13/2014. The money withheld from the pay of each temporary public employee by authority of the mayor and the city council or hackle board, as shown in temp MOUs, provide the mayor and each public named body a fiduciary duty to protect and serve these funds in the future. However, the records show that each public entity chose to grant building trades trustees temporary custody of these funds and failed to recover custody. Consequently, lasers and calpers were denied custody of these publicly sheltered funds for decades, more than 90 days after craftsmen were employed past six months. In addition, MOU show the 10% sum sheltered from the prevailing base pay of each city employee, as shown in MOU 35 and 62, have never been accounted for and dispersed. Consequently, you are supposed to know the difference between public debt and private debt. The money held by the trustees of the union is private debt. The money sheltered in the pay of employees is public debt. And the money sheltered from the pay, base pay of all in public, uh, city employees is still a public debt, which is entitled to interest from all the people who chose to obtain custody of those funds. Thank you."
Leslie No Last Name. Leslie No Last Name.
Uh, good, I, I'm not sure what time it is. Good afternoon. This is probably gonna be for Councilman Price and others. We were getting ready to leave, but my grandfather here, Leslie, insisted on speaking. My grandfather is 96 years old, and he'd like you guys to hear, and you, Councilman Price, to hear some of what he has to say.
Go ahead, you can tell me. I'm not good as a talker, but only thing I can do is do my best. I, I had a problem a few months ago with my property, and it was two inspectors came by a year before that. They, they told me, "If you're gonna save those inner tubes on the outside, you're gonna have to have a fence built up eight feet high." I had that done, and, uh, an inspector came out, well, it's a fellow in Long Beach, somehow or another said I was taking his, his customers and things like that. That's who sent the inspector there to give me a bad time. So what happened? This, uh, inspector that came out, he came out twice. He'd peep in the gate and look around, turn around, get in his car and leave. So he never would talk to me. So anyway, as it is, I'll get back to this now. The other day, I went to the mailbox and got a letter out, it says that my grand, how much, how much is that that they talking about?
Um, it's item number 15, and it's gonna be on the calendar next Friday, because the bill that he got the other day is for $27,483 for the clearance. My grandfather is 96 years old, he's served in World War II, and we are just gonna come back and ask for leniency. I've spoken to the inspector terrace, so he's been really helpful.
Well, thank you for coming down to welcome Mr. Price. I know you're very anxious to assist if you can, so he's gonna meet you right on the side there, and God bless you for being 96 years old. Thank you. Our last public card.
Six.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
I look, I hope I look good at 66 as you do, sir. I'm, uh, right near there, a few years off. Mr. Price will help you, and Mr. Sax, if you could make your way here, I'll formally call you. This is the last card I have, calling Arnold Sax.
Yes, thank you again. Good, good morning, Arnold Sax. And I, I did really wanna talk about, I know it's been a pain in the butt, the DWP and this fiasco over this measly $4 million a year, which turns, turns out to be $40 million a year. Turns out in yesterday's newspaper, Daily Breeze, they wrote, and I guess it'd be the Daily News, that it's been settled as a trust. That's the information that was used, that was the information that was given out. So it's gone from a nonprofit, which would allow people to write it off as a donation, mentioned as a foundation, and now it's a trust. Each one of those entities has some legalese resolving or involving the use of those terms. I believe a trust, you can't use those funds for a period of time. And where is the federal government on this? I mean, if you, you know whose trust has been in the news lately? The Donald Sterling Trust. He has a trust, the Clippers are part of a Donald Sterling Trust. The inheritance, whatever it is, somewhere down the highway. So what does that mean? And who are the trustees of the trust fund? Well, it's a public agency. The DWP, again, the Department of Water and the Department of Power, those are public agencies. So who has the public voice? Turns out the council gets to appoint whoever they want. Why aren't the public involved in appointee? Why don't they have a position on the Board of Trustees? Because that's who oversees this. Instead, it's a private union that has positions on this Board of Trustees. I wish there was somebody with some legal background who could explain it to the public. It would be very helpful.
Thank you. That completes public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, members? Any announcement on a big event at Hanson Dam? Announce it again, Mr. Fuentes.
So this Sunday, be there before 6:00 AM to register. We'll take late registrations for the Hanson Dam Triathlon celebrating its 10th year, Mr. Labange. Thank you.
Very good. Any other announcements, members? Mr. Sadio.
Yes, uh, early announcement for next week. We have the First Annual Latin Jazz Music Festival in northeast Los Angeles, featuring Poncho Sanchez and his band, Mongol Rama with Jose Riso, and, um, another dozen bands over two days. It's gonna be a great experience, and this is gonna be at the Royal Seco, Sycamore Grove Park at 4702 North Figueroa, open to the public, free of charge. Grove Park at 4702 North Figueroa, open to the public, free of charge.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tomorrow, Saturday morning, beginning at 9 o'clock, here in City Hall in the Public Works Room, the Neighborhood Council Budget Day will be taking place again this year. This is a great opportunity for people from throughout the city to begin to provide input to the budget process in terms of the priorities that their communities have and suggestions for reforms and so on. I'll be there, the mayor will be there, Controller will be there, and many others. So, everyone's welcome. It's 9 o'clock tomorrow morning, Saturday, in the Public Works Room of City Hall.
Any other announcements? Tomorrow morning at 7:30, we're going to honor Avak Catalin. Avak will be removing his 25,000 illegally posted sign on Hillhurst Avenue. He's very special, Avak. We thank you for all you do, you keep the district clean. Members, that's it. Any adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions? Let's all rise for adjourning motions.
Thank you very much. I have three adjourning motions. I'd first ask that we adjourn in memory of Clarice Dolores Brown, passed away June 3, 2014. She was born April 10, 1933, in Marshall, Texas. She attended HP Pemberton High School in Harrison County Unified School District. After graduating, Clarice continued her education in Wiley College in Marshall, Texas. As a little girl, she was interested in sewing, she designed her own clothes and made most of her family's clothes. She worked for over 30 years in the garment industry as a pattern grader, retiring in 1972. Her health began to decline, but she did not stop working for many years thereafter. Her funeral services were held on Tuesday, June 10, at Faithful Central Bible Church in Inglewood, and she survived by her two sons and a host of family members. Secondly, we have a very unique situation, we have two relatives that passed away within two weeks of each other. First, we have Alvin Leon Taylor, ask that we adjourn in memory of Dr. Taylor, who passed away June 18 at the age of 72. He was born November 7, 1941, at White Memorial Hospital. He liked being called, liked, what did I say? As he was, oh, he liked to be called Leon. He grew up in Los Angeles, attended the Los Angeles Academy and Linwood Academy. As a young man, he and his brothers were driven by their mother from residence to residence to maintain the family business, which dealt with landscaping and gardening service. He also assisted his father at their dollar outlet store. After graduation, he attended Oakwood College and later transferred to the LA Metropolitan College of Business, where he earned an AA degree. He continued his education at Pacific Union College, earning a bachelor's degree. In August 1973, he made a cross-country journey to Washington DC, and he participated in the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom. There, he saw Dr. Martin Luther King deliver his historic "I Have a Dream" speech. After earning his master's degree, he was inspired, so he joined the Peace Corps, where he traveled to Tanzania for his service. He met his wife there. After finishing his service in the Peace Corps, he moved back to LA and began teaching social studies at Compton High School. He later earned his degree, doctorate in philosophy from UCLA. Retired from teaching in '79 and decided to help out in the family business, which was the Adam Sebastian stove store that was originally located on Crenshaw Boulevard, later relocated in Inglewood. He worked tirelessly at the location until his retirement. He was someone the community looked up to and was affectionately given the name Simba, acknowledging the lion and the lion king. He also had high esteem and was often called upon to do remarks and reflection on family events. He survived by his wife and two daughters. His brother passed away on July 8, and that's Robert Donald Taylor. Robert Jr. attended and graduated from Los Angeles Junior Academy in '55, and that's class president. Only 16 years old, he left for Oakwood College in the fall of 1955, where he attended just one year. He was concerned for his siblings' Christian education, brought him home for five years, where he worked busily to help pay for their tuition. Driven by his passion for education, he eventually enrolled in Pacific Union College, even hitchhiking as needed from LA to Napa, as he traveled back and forth from home to school. Finally, in June 1963, he received a bachelor's degree in religion, graduating with his brother, Alvin. He continued his education, received a master's degree from Andrews University a year later. While a student at Pacific Union, he met his wife. As a testament to his persistence, they were married just hours after his college graduation. For 11 years, their home was made in California until 1974, when he answered the call and was, began to work with South Central Conference. Robert Jr. took over pastoring four churches in Alabama, eventually landing in Lexington, Kentucky, where his family remained until he returned to California in 1979. He was a man of many talents, could not help but wear many hats. Exceeding beyond the traditional role of pastor, he was also a teacher, a youth leader, a choir director, a bandleader, orchestra director, organist, soloist, pathfinding leader evangelist, a music arranger. He also participated in, much in Christian radio as a host. His funeral services were held July 17 at the University Seventh-day Adventist Church. He survived by his host of family members.
Members, seeing no other adjourning motions, go serve the city well. Thank you, clerks and staff here in council, this meeting is now adjourned.